There's so many different things that teachers, you know, deal with on a day to day basis. And I would always encourage parents, our parents to, you know, to attend their kid's school one day.
Right.
Go up and, and just check in the office with the principals. I had like to go sit in the class because they, they ought to see what's going on. There's really good work going on and um it's, it's going to take a, you know, a minute to get this thing turned around like we really want it.
Is that a money thing or is that just a strategy thing?
Strategy, yes, it is a strategy thing.
Brian Murray, not related to Bill Murray.
Absolutely not. I wish I could claim that, but no.
I checked. I was doing, I was doing some deep diving. You are running for the Midland School Board. You're running for reelection, right? Correct?
Correct.
District seven.
Right.
So can you give me a little bit of history, you know, your background or just how you got involved overall in, in the school board?
Sure. So kind of have a background of uh being involved with the school district and um started back in about two thousand and six, when I wanted just to be, you know, around my kids more. And so uh really got invested in their, in their elementary schools in the PTA process. I started off in the PTA uh as a member at their grade house because all three boys, that's where they were going to school at. Worked my way up to be president at the PTA grade house. And so I led that group and, and really enjoyed it. Caught a lot of flack from my male friends, but I mean, if we were doing good work for kids and I thought that was important and really for teachers. And so uh that graduated on to a, a, a position where I was the president of the city council PTAs. So I was over the whole city and, and you know, and so I'm going to campus to campus, trying to do some leadership with them and how, how we build it and make it better. In the meantime, I was, you know, volunteering for my kids and I was coaching their GMFL. So I got on the GMFL football board and I don't know if you, hadn't been in Midland long, but that's like third grade through sixth grade where they play Pop Warner football. And so I was coaching there and got on the board. So I'd served five years on the board as my three boys went through the process. That kind of graduated that uh when they got to uh the high school or the freshman school. We were on the baseball team. So I was treasurer of the baseball booster club. Graduated from there to the treasurer football booster club, which is a much bigger fundraiser. Just because there's so many more kids. And then I was president of the booster club and um ended up doing that for two years and that's a joint job. So my wife and I both did that for two years and that second year cost me a lot because she's, when Coach Morton came and said, hey, Brian, do you want to do this again? I'm having a hard time finding somebody. She said, I said, let me talk to Amy. I gotta go run this by Amy. So I went home and she said, I'll do this, but I want a swimming pool in the backyard. And so we're, we have a swimming pool and you know, Coach Morton never reimbursed me for that, but uh we have a swim pool in our backyard. But anyway, getting back on track, um I did that for a couple of years and then through that and, and being all the PTA activities, I began to learn and meet people that were involved with the school district and the school board. And my district, district representative at the time was Jay Isaacs. He lived right around the corner from me.
Okay.
Great guy that lived here. He's a banker and well-known banker and uh here in Midland. And um when he decided he wouldn't run again, he called me and said, hey, um, or would you consider this? And um I said, sure. Well, let's kind of get our feet wet. What are we doing? Cause he kind of let me know and you know, some a little bit in advance. So um I jumped on as a naming committee to start off, I think, and I probably get the, get them out of order. But I was on, sat on the committee to name uh Barbie Yarborough Elementary. And um at the time I didn't know Ms. Yarborough uh from Adam and I just heard all the good things from her. But I will tell you, she is one of the treasures. We have an M I S D. And so I'm happy, so happy to say that I was on the committee that named that elementary after because she is fabulous. And she still comes and works and volunteers at our schools every day. And so she's been doing it forever. But she's got the greatest stories and best storyteller. But I did that. Then I was on a committee to uh name, hire a new executive athletic director. So went through that process and um and then from there, you know, I was on the two thousand and twelve bond committee. And um went through, sit through that whole process. So I've actually done three bonds. One before I was on the board and two, when I was sitting on the bond, on the board. And so uh I was part of that and we were successful and we, that's when we built three new elementaries and then uh really upgraded a lot of the, the buildings across the district. And so that was really good. So I've kind of had a background where I kind of learned uh just by being involved, you know, how did, you know, what was going on and made me more interested.
Wow. I mean, you've got a ton of history with this, with this city.
Yeah. And, 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 and part of that, it's kind of job related, but also it's not because it's a passion. But I've been on the Illinois Art Museum Board uh 12 years now. I'm a past president, but right now I continue to serve as either treasurer or the chairman or the vice president of finance, which is kind of my role there. But um and um just in the background, but um you know, what I've seen grow at the Illinois Art Museum is we've really grown into the academic side of it because so many things, when you start looking at classrooms and what can we afford to keep and what do we got to move is we've lost a lot of art in the buildings. And so uh right now, uh Illinois Art Museum is really pushing into the schools and ECSD. And we're in some of the ones here in M I S D, but just, and it's free. I mean, we do, we do all the work. We bring a person in and, and actually teaches the art, gives it, will give the teacher a little time off to go do something, focus on something different for a little bit. And so we bring the materials, we bring the, the teacher in and the guide for it. And really it's um, we had a fabulous director, um but she, she was, she knew the teaks. And so she was able to sell that, what we were doing with art to make sure we were meeting the state teaks for um, for our kids. So it was a good program. And then also I'm on the uh, I'm the uh chairman of finance for the Wagner Noel, performing art center now.
Yeah. What don't you do?
Yeah. So it, it's all about finance. It's all about finance. But that's, you know, that's one of the key things I think that I brought to the board is that I am the finance guy. And so I told you earlier about the ratings that we've gone um from a ninety or seventy-two up to a ninety-six now. But um we've done a lot of other really good things and, and, you know, things I'm proud of because I'm conservative. I don't, you know, I know we have to have bonds and we've got to build new because we haven't done that for so many years. We just didn't have the resources. But um in my time on the board since two thousand and sixteen, uh we've uh either retired, defeased or refinanced and saved the Midland taxpayer seventy-five million dollars. And so it's been really important to be, to be on that work. And I've, I've been on the finance committee all seven and a half years I was on the board, but I chaired it for six and a half years.
Okay.
So there was, early on, there was one other person that chaired it, but um since then I've, you know, I've kind of chaired that and been through the work. And so uh and I had a little background because I was in auditing uh before I came into oil and gas into Midland. But I audited ECSD and M I S D. So I had a little bit of background in, in how that all works. So I couldn't tell you any of it and I would never do their job, but at least I have the background to kind of know that. So I feel, you know, pretty good that I provided a good service for the school district.
Okay. So you weren't, you didn't come from um education background, teacher, principal, or anything like that, right? You're just an engaged dad.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and so my wife now is a teacher of twenty-eight years.
Oh, wow.
And, and so she just retired this past year after being in the classroom thirteen years. And um leads me to another thing is my, you know, my two boys, the two youngest boys uh both taught at uh Midland Legacy last year. And so uh it turned out great for one of them. And one of them decided he wanted to do something different. So he actually went to work for the city of Midland and he's doing a great job there. But um I've, so I've got a son that's uh teaching and coaching his second year here at Legacy High School and he did two years in Greenwood. And so it kind of runs in the family with the kids and, and, and the wife and their mom was a school teacher. And now she's in a executive director over in um Greenwood Independent School District. So there's a little bit of blood there.
Okay. Just a family of, in the education?
Yeah, absolutely.
I have the most respect for the teachers.
Yeah, there's definitely a knack for that in your personality to be able to do that. And so um most people don't really understand how teachers do it because it's not about money. And it, and, and you know, I, I know from living with my wife, um it's personal. And so they really have a heart for kids and want to do what's best. And so I, and I see that, that's a, a lot of stories for teachers is they, you know, it's personal for them and they want to do theirs. It's not something that they get and they're not ever going to get rich on or, or you know, do, but there's personal satisfaction for seeing kids grow. And so I, I, I think that's a special calling.
I mean, you've definitely been an advocate for teachers and administrators. And I, I know you said it's, it's not about the money, but obviously like you want to make this area more attractive for teachers, right? So how, how are you going about or what's your plan to attract more teachers or retain?
Yeah. And I, I, I think retention is a big thing to start off with. And so that was one thing that when I got on the school board that I thought, man, we're losing a whole lot of good teachers to surrounding school district or private schools. And, and so I thought, what, how do we close that gap? What are we doing? And so how do we create a better culture on M I S D? And um uh you know, I've been on the board for almost eight years and um what I can tell you is there's a lot to do with leadership. And um, and so I'm really proud of our current leadership that we um have invested in, in the, in the school building and leadership with principals. And they're growing that. Um so they're spending a lot of time training, training those people. And so I think that's where it kind of starts is when you're going to retain people is they've got to have a great culture on campus. They've got to know, have a principal that's know, they know that's going to have their back and stand up for them when there's, when there's a discipline issue or something else going on on campus. Hey, uh I'm, I'm here for you and I'm going to, I'm going to cover for you. And so I think that's where it kind of starts. Now, some of the things we've done to uh really recruit people is we've, we've, we've raised teacher salaries. And since I've been on the board and I, I couldn't go back all the way to two thousand and sixteen. I was trying today just for something else because I just kind of wanted to know. But uh starting, I, I think I traced, traced it back to starting salaries in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And so we've gone uh from then uh from a fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollar starting salary to about sixty thousand five hundred, sixty-one, five hundred. So, so it, we've, we've grown, you know, quite a bit and um, and I think that's good. I think it was about uh twenty-two percent of the pay increases that we've had. But there's also some other things that we do for, you know, benefit wise that help us. And, and we're one of those few school districts that still offers an option for free uh insurance. And so we cover that for all of our employees and, and, and there's a little caveat. They have to um maintain some good health uh qualities and, and some effort to, to do that. But basically it's going to get your normal checkup and, and just doing routine things to catch up. But so we've done that. We've, we've, we've really varied because um a couple of years ago, I thought it was important that uh we were seeing and especially, you know, come, you know, going into COVID and coming out. And we saw a lot of uh attendance issues with our teachers. They weren't really just being there. And so I thought, well, um if we're going to pay a sub, there's a certain amount of money that comes with paying a sub. And so I thought, well, um and I kind of worked with another board member, but I kind of thought if, if we've already got a budget for this, wouldn't it be better to incentivize our teachers on staff to be there? And, and so we actually brought on at that point a, a perfect attendance award. So every six weeks, these teachers were getting that award, getting that five hundred dollar bonus. And it was really, I shouldn't say bonus, never say bonus in, in school district. It was a stop and uh perfect attendance stop. And so they were getting that and, and you get that every six weeks. So that, you know, turned out to be three thousand dollars a year you could earn for just, you know, being there. And, and you can't be, have perfect attendance because you're going to get sick or something. And obviously you've got to take your days, but it was just something that, hey, we, we want you here because we know a, as a school board, and I'm not an educator, but I know, you know, my wife's an educator and I know how it is. It's the best instruction comes from the teacher that's certified, that's there, that uh really knows what they're doing, has been trained. So that first instruction is important. And so it just really felt like it was, that was, you know, something we could add value to. And so we did. And I think it was successful. COVID kind of threw a little cramp in it because you know, you had people having to stay away and then requirements for so long being out. And then if you have kids, there was another issue. But um you know, uh I guess early on in the school board, when I was on, joined the board, we uh actually, you know, worked with the city. We worked with uh some other nonprofit organizations and, and how do we, you know, what, how do we recruit? Because the cost of living was getting crazy here. And so what do you do to bring in a teacher that's going to be on a teacher salary for a first year teacher salary, but still be able to afford it? And so the school district did invest in two apartment complexes. And, and that's a controversial topic. And, and you know, people say you're not in that business and no, we're not in the business of doing that. And um but what I've seen and what I know now is, you know, we've got to that busy point again. And, and our, the two apartment, apartment complexes are, are completely uh utilized. There's no, no openings. And so what we do is we offer a, a discounted rate for what you would get in the market for teachers to come in and, and uh actually have some place to live and not have to pay a astronomical fee. So it was another way for us to kind of help teachers. And so I, I think that's been beneficial. Um you know, just a whole lot of just recognizing what teachers do. I think it's important for, you know, retaining teachers.
Sure. I want to pivot a little bit just to, you know, for the, for the parents out there especially, like being on the school board has got to be, I mean, it's got to be fairly stressful, right? It's like you wanted, obviously you want to do what's best for children, right? And, and so you try to implement different programs or different um, you know, aspects that some parents are going to love. Some parents are going to not love, you know, right? So how do you balance those, those types of programs?
Well, I, I tell you, it's taken me a long time to adjust to that because uh just at heart, I'm a people pleaser. And so I always want everybody to like me. And what you just said is so correct. If you make fifty percent of the people happy and fifty percent mad, just depending on how you, you know, just make a decision. And so what I've tried to do is, is in my tenure as on school board is just, you know, I know what's popular, I know what's not, what's unpopular, but what's best for kids? And so, you know, there's been some decisions we've had to make that were really hard decisions for the community. But at the end of the day, it was just, you know, I'm here to make a better life and a better education for our kids. So where, where does that decision fall? And, and looking at data and just deciding and, and sometimes it's hard because you are unpopular. But you know, usually if you have uh people that are willing to listen and they're really invested in the school district, they're going to sit down with you and you're going to be able to talk to them. Oh, I get that. This makes sense now. And so um that's how I've kind of always pushed for it. Uh I will tell you, I prayed awful lot about it because it, it is something that when I, you know, if you're a people pleaser and you're always making people upset, it's like, how do I deal with this? But just knowing you're doing the right thing.
So, so for the, in the past 10 years, like what are, what have been some of the most pressing challenges? And, and, and what are you looking to, you know, this new term, right? Let's say November, boom, you're reelected. What's your first step?
When I got on the school board eight years ago, the district wasn't in great financial shape. And it wasn't anything that they were, they were doing particularly wrong. It's just that we, we just didn't have the right people, you know, taking care of the budget and, and kind of holding the line on it. And so we spent uh two or three years and um, and, and I'm going to get to the point that this, that we've been through three superintendents since I've been on the board.
Okay.
Three full-time superintendents.
Okay.
And so while I tell you the uh, one of the best things that Mr. Riddick did when he was superintendent was he brought in Darla Moss and she was a great CFO. It took us back to zero-based budgeting, uh changed our fiscal year to June thirtieth. So we were able to actually line up ordering supplies so that they were ready for August when teachers came back. Because in the, in the past, we were August thirty-first. And so if your new budget starts September first, teachers are coming in August. That didn't work. I mean, you couldn't ever get them ready. And so that's been amazing uh to do. And so um and during that tenure uh on the school board, we've gone from a seventy-two rating for our first financial rating, which is how the state rates us for financials. Uh we were seventy-two to we, we've hovered a, we went to seventy-two to ninety-two, but we've really hovered over ninety-six, uh ninety-eight, one hundred, and then back to ninety-six. But a lot of that has to do with recapture and that's a whole different, different topic we'd go into. But yeah.
Michael Redd.
Yeah. The reason why we, we're not a perfect hundred now is because there's a recapture payment due um in August by law. But the state likes you to pay it early to, to coincide with your fiscal year. Well, um just being fiscally responsible of, hey, if I'm going to give you twelve million dollars, are you going to pay me early? Are you going to let that ride in the bank and draw interest for your personal business or school district? And so that's what we've done is we've kept the money till the deadline. So we've never paid late. But we've kept the money so that we were actually getting the most for taxpayers in, in Midland. And uh so we take it, we take a four-point hit, but that's, I mean, that's neither here nor there. I mean, it's still a really good rating and uh we're proud of that. But um I think what I would say tackling and the issues I've seen is really is going from, you know, when I got on the board, we were without a superintendent, so we named an interim. Then we hired a superintendent, uh went down a road that he really led work that we had wanted. Which was some eighteen eighty-two work, some choice school work. Um we, we really felt was a calling from the, from the community. And so that, you know, that all went really well. Uh the issue was on the backend, our neighborhood schools, we weren't paying enough attention to. So we went, we had to make a change there and went to a different superintendent and got one in that was uh coming out of California, but she was from El Paso and kind of knew Texas way, but you know, really wasn't from Texas uh immediately. But everybody said, well, we need someone from Texas to understand it. So that's what we looked for in candidates. And so that was a key criteria. And so she came in and did, and did a good job. She was, you know, here during COVID and coming out of COVID. And so um that we saw some growth there. Uh what I can say is we had some, we had some growth stability the first couple of years. And then we kind of leveled off and, and trailed down a little bit. And so we made a change and then uh we get into COVID and, and everybody across the state took a hit in COVID. And so uh what we saw is that uh I was board president during the time. And so you know, I, in, in working with her, I was like, no, our community wants to go back to school. They don't want to be home. We don't want to be homeschool. And this is hard. This is hard on teachers, hard on kids. And it was really hard socially for kids. Um and so um get back in school. And so what we saw that year, we came back to school pretty early compared to the rest of the state and the nation for sure. But um we saw where we actually caught the state in some areas. And we really didn't drop as much as most did is because we were in, in school. And so that was a good thing for us. But then um Dr. Ramsey got called to, to be at Arlington. And so, or I'm sorry, to Fort Worth. And uh she, she joined the Fort Worth Independent School District. And so we went on a search again. And so uh you know, I've been through that twice.
Yeah.
And that this is the third time. So really you've got to, you've got to know, hey, how invested are you in Midland? And then, and then I'll have all the other criteria or attributes that you need for a good leader. And so we went out and, and did a search again and, and Dr. Howard came on the radar. And uh she was in Midland. She was actually my boy's principal when they were at Lee High School.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And so I'd got to know her a little bit there because I was the booster club president um for football at, at that time. And I did baseball some too, but I was a treasurer at baseball, but I was football booster club president and, and treasurer at a different term. And, and so I was always working with her because she was saying, Mr. Murray, where, where we spend our money? What are we doing for our program? What are we doing? You know, because she was always making sure we were doing what was best for the Rebels. And so we developed a relationship there. So I'd kind of known her in the past and she had taken, she had left here to get some advanced experience going to Hector County. And then she took a superintendent position up in Plains and then went back to Hector County and then transferred to the superintendent to the Incrain. And so she had got the experience we needed.
Sure.
She was, her husband through all of those transitions um stayed in Midland. He never left. And so he was, he's on the fire department and he's, you know, he's a, a ranking officer, maybe uh, I would get that wrong if I told you, maybe fire captain, something. But he, he'd, he'd always maintained his position here. So he never left. And so it was a natural calling to bring her back. And so um what I've seen is she's really embraced Midland and, and Midland has embraced her. Just a couple of weeks ago, she was named the chairman.
Yeah, I hear great things.
Volunteer of the year.
Yeah. I was going to ask, like, what did you see in her in terms of like, okay?
So you know, so that process is pretty encompassing and you go through uh an initial round of reviewing applications. Then you do a first round interview and then you uh weed out people and you can do a callback. So in both interviews, we kind of gained a comfort level with her on what she was about. It was all about outcome and performance and how do we, you know, holding her accountable for, for the work. And, and that's what, you know, that's what we preach with everybody is we want, we need, we need someone that's going to be accountable. But, but the next step we took is uh with her and, and it was, it was important to all the candidates we, that we talked to, but was discipline. Because we, you know, discipline across public schools, across the state and nation has really gotten out of hand. And you know, I don't attribute that to the school districts. I attribute that to broken home lives and, and things like that where, or it may not be a broken home life and maybe just where a parent, both parents are having to work or something else, you know, this, we just don't have that family unit like we used to when I was growing up.
Sure.
And so there's been a lot of changes. And so we really, really harped to her about uh discipline and staying on top of that. And so that was one of the things she came in originally and did and um really pushed, not that she created new laws or, or new policies that weren't already in our handbooks. She enforced them and she told the teachers, hey, we're going to enforce this and we're going to back you up. And our principals, you're going to back your teachers up and we're going to do this. And we opened up additional uh spaces that kids that were in trouble were going to go to because we weren't going to just keep putting them back in classrooms. And you know, and there's a time for passion. I get that and understanding uh what a kid's going through. But sometimes they just need discipline. They need to know that there's a repercussion for what you've done. And so um you know, we've seen that be beneficial to us. But really I think her understanding of where we were as a community and what um people in the community, the business world, that really is so uh good to M I S D and everybody in the Midland about how they support Midland is how do we, we, we got to get back to where, we're being able to lead the work for, you know, the, the education part of this to match the type of employees we're drawing to town. And so she understood all of that. And so I, I've seen, you know, she's been here now going on. Well, I guess come, this coming up January will be two years. And so um, so really that's a year and a half of school district time. But um she works as hard as anybody I've ever seen and, 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 and just, you know, if, whether she's on campuses every day or she's attending events every night or leading her cabinet meetings downtown, um she's on top of things. And so um and then, and by doing that, she hired a cabinet that works, I mean outrageous. They work, they don't leave anything, you know, unturned that what they're looking for is better outcomes. And so, you know, we're not where we want to be. Obviously we, we, we saw some great strides this past year, but uh we've got some things to do. And so her team is really working on that. And you know, and at the same time, um one of the things, the big things that she did is took on, took on a new strategic plan to bring on board with us and, and really it encompassed the board goals that we had set for her, that, how she's going to be evaluated.
Okay.
But it also took on some other things. And one of them was culture. How do you know, what's the student experience and what's the parent experience and what's the community experience with M I S D? And so, you know, part of that is building that teacher culture that you, you need to retain your people. But she's, so she's taken on a lot of these metrics about strategic plan. And I want to say the number was around seventy percent that she hit in the first year of really moving the targets about what we're doing in Midland, in M I S D to make it a better school district so that we can get the better outcomes. So um she's really worked hard. Her staff's worked hard and um, you know, really, and nobody will disagree with this. The really the differences made in a school, in, in the classroom with teachers. And so how do you keep those teachers happy? Um it's hard. And how do you, um their job is hard. And how do you
Yeah.
uh really um stay on top of what the supports they need. And is, is it training? Is it um extra, you know, support curriculum? You know, there's so many different things that teachers, you know, deal with on a day-to-day basis. And I would always encourage parents, our parents to, you know, to attend their kid's school one day.
Right.
Go up and, and just check in the office with the principals. I had like to go sit in the class because they, they ought to see what's going on. There's really good work going on and um it's, it's going to take a, you know, a minute to get this thing turned around like we really want it. But there's good work.
Like what's, is that a, is that a budget thing? Is that a, is that a money thing or is that just a strategy thing?
Strategy, yes. It is a strategy thing. And so um I think what you, what we see and, and what we've been dealing with all along and, and, and the change in leadership kills you, kills it every time. Because every time you change leaders, you go through a process of having to redo a system, train the system, get everybody on board with the system. And so you're, you're, you're.
You lose the momentum.
Yeah. You, you're losing value with kids because this is, I mean, the two years is important in a kid's life is we can't keep pushing kids two years down the road with a new leader and starting over and doing something different. And so um I think the stability is so important. And so I really see us, you know, going down that path now of, of some stability with what we're doing curriculum wise. And you know, I've always have been of, of the idea, if, if you're going to take, put something on a teacher's plate, you need to take something else off because they don't have enough time to do what they're doing and, and you can't keep adding stuff. So I think the real answer is stability uh in the classroom, stability with the curriculum and the leadership and knowing that, hey, we're, we're going to ride this out with you. And that's what's so hard about changing leaders is that every time you're reflecting something different. Because I'm, you know, I'm an accountant and I see things pretty in black and white. And it's like, well, if we're doing what's right early, how are we getting behind up here? And so it really is that first teaching that they do in kindergarten that really helps them and, and gets them to the next level where they're reading. Because everything now, you know, when you get to math, it's mostly word problems. The state has changed things that you're having to, you know, understand, read the word problem, figure out what they're asking and then calculate the answer, formulate the answer. So it's just changed. And so I think this is important. I think that's where we're off to a good start. I think we saw great, great improvement from in our pre-K and kindergarten last year.
How do you, what kind of data, like, how do you measure that? Like, how do you measure success KPIs in, in the schools?
Yeah. So uh there, there's a couple of ways and I'll tell you, you know, the state does it by giving you a star test.
Right.
And it starts in the third grade and that's not a popular test. And I don't think it's popular with anybody because it's a one day in time test on all the knowledge you've learned for that year.
I remember taking the Scantrons, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. You either moved on or you didn't.
Yeah. And so this is, that's, that's how the, that's how the state grades us and looks at answers. Um and I, and I've heard, I, we just had a training a couple of weeks ago in uh San Antonio. And I heard that they're actually looking about getting away from the star testing, coming up with a new, new uh way to do that. But what, one of the things I've seen and I've, you know, been doing this eight years and uh that I think is, is something valuable that we see now is this, it's called MAP and it's testing. And so the kids take that pretty regularly because it's something they can work on daily, but then they test us, you know, whether it's six weeks or nine weeks or, you know, it kind of varies on how, what, what grade level, who, what you're testing and all that. But MAP has national averages. And so when we're, you know, going through this, testing a child, we can see, hey, are they on the same level? Did they start at the same level? Cause it gives us a, a, a start level. So we had a baseline. Then you, then you've got a mid-year level to see, all right, this kid went from here to here. Does that match what we're seeing nationally? And then, you know, from there to the, to the end of the year, did we grow this kid a full year? And you know, in a lot of situations, um what, the way that would come across is that you got fifty percent. Well, if you did fifty percent, that means you grew them a year. If you got anything over fifty percent, that means you grew them in excess of one year. And so we saw some, some of that last year. We saw some, some students move, move more than the fifty percent to get that, that they were doing, growing more than one year. So that's important. But I think what, why I think that's important is because it's grade level across the state and the nation. And it's not just, I mean, the star test, it's, it's a difficult test and, and it really um teaches or, or try to train, makes, I guess, trains you to hear the questions you ought to know, hear the questions that you, you should know. And then hear the questions that are making you higher level think and are you going to get there? And so, you know, is that fair to say, well, because this kid didn't master, he wasn't on grade level? I don't think that's the right
Yeah.
Diagnosis. And so really what, what we're seeing now through using the map process is that we can see where these kids are growing and how they're doing. And so. What I've, what I heard a couple of weeks ago was that maybe the state's looking at using the map for their, uh, analysis, which would, you know, be, be great. And I think that the issue is, is it's just got to be consistent. And 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 since I've been on the board in eight years, we've, we've changed that, I think the metrics three times. From the state level, not from M I S D, but the state level saying, you know, here's what you're looking for. Here's what you've got, what we expect from you to, to give you an A rating. And so it, it really is and, um, kind of arbitrary because a lot of it has some bell curve in it. So. If this many people did great, we've got to have this many people not do great. So that makes the test harder.
Right.
And then, and then are you really testing kids on grade level? And that's my issue with the star test. And it, and in addition to the fact that you've put all of this stress on them to have to show up for one day and and really nail it with all of their information. In one day, because it's stressful for kids too. So.
I guess that brings me to a point like, something that I didn't have to deal with as a kid. Which is that, like, how are you addressing the rise in technology, the rise in A I and chat G P T and all those things? Like, do those topics? You know, come up in the, in, in board meetings?
Yeah, it hadn't really come up in board meetings as much as, you know, through this process of this, this election cycle, obviously it's more important than it was four years ago, which was more important than it was four years prior to that. But we had a, we had a question about it, um, in a forum a couple of weeks ago about, you know, how do you, you know, work with the technology to make sure you're still getting. What they need, but you're using the technology to get there. And so. I think that's a hard discussion because some people just don't want their kids being. On the computer and doing it. But the state requires us to take the test on the computer. Now it's not an option. So third through eighth grade, there, it's all computerized.
Okay.
Same way with, uh, and then that's for the start. But then the end of course exams going above that are all computerized too. So. What, what I think you have to do is you have to have a good foundation, good, I'm sorry, good foundation of the basics that's taught and 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 that's what your teachers are in the classroom doing. And then they can allow you to, to go do some work, maybe in a, in a center where there's, you're breaking out five kids that are on the same level and they're getting over here, getting work. On whatever they need to get work. And then the teachers over here working with a group that's really struggling. And, and you know, growing them because we've got to push every kid. And that's so hard when you're in a classroom and you see when a teacher gets her role. Her roster and it says, well, these kids, you know, um. Uh, achieve approach standards. These kids met standards and these kids mastered. Well, you've got a big range of kids there and some, you know, some of them aren't going to be on grade level. So those teachers are having to really work hard to make sure that they're addressing every need and how they're doing that. And so. I think with the technology, we see that it's, it's kind of thing in my mind that it's going to continue to build. So when you start young, you're going to use it some. And then you. By the time you get to high school, you're going to use it a lot because, I mean, you know, I, and even with watching my kids recently go through college, it was all on the computer. There was. Nothing that was handwritten or a notebook like we did or I did when I was in college. I mean, it's all computerized and it's, and so they've got to learn it. And they've got to do it. But it's also the, um, job market.
Right.
Almost everything is technology based now. I mean, um, you know, I learned to do accounting on five sheet, five, five column note paper. And I don't even think you can buy that anymore. It's all, you know, it's all the computer and Excel and accounting programs. And so it's, it's so totally different, but, um. I just think it's something we're going to grow into. And I, you know, what I said in that forum is that. The future I had graduating from high school is totally different from the future our kids that we're graduating now are going to have. And so we've got to prepare them for that. And so, um, I think it's just part of the process and but it, but you still have to strike that balance. What's good education, good foundation setting education? And then how do we supplement that with, with technology and, 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 and technology, the, you know, computers are great. The technology is great, but you just can't, you know. Push all of it to that because you've got to have good teachers.
You, you, like you said, you have to have the fundamentals. You have to have the foundation.
Right.
That makes sense. What are the struggles or the stresses from the parents? Like, what do you hear from parents that like, that they, that they want changed?
Yeah. And I think the most, uh, probably overarching is discipline. And how do you support that? I mean, and, and, you know, we have so many good parents and and so many involved parents in M I S D that, um, really want, you know, their kids to succeed and they're volunteering up at schools. They're being on the P T As. They're helping out with the, you know. Like now we're coming up with the fall carnivals, doing things like that. But I think discipline is the number one thing that, you know, they, we need to maintain. And so I think we've gotten so much better at that. Just last year alone, because we made an emphasis when we hired Dr. Howard and and then, and in, in, um, adding to that, she, you know. Put it to her team is that discipline is going to be important. And so we saw a, a, a decrease of thirty eight percent in aggressive behaviors last year. So fights, uh, that sort of thing where people are going to the office. And so that's, that's intentional because we have really worked hard. And what we're seeing now is that, um, that continues to decline, which is what we want. Of anything and everything in, in, in school district world. That's the only thing you want to decline, uh, is, is the number of discipline issues. But, um, I, I think what the next thing would be most important would be safety.
Yeah, I was going to ask that because I asked my daughter, you know, in high school, I was like, have they talked to you about? You know, there's obviously an issue, right? With, with violence.
Yeah. So, so, uh, and we've had some help with the state and and looking for more help because I think it's coming and I, um, but I will tell you, um. That, you know, they passed a law last year to give us or to, uh, mandate basically a, a, a security officer in each campus. And so, um, that's something we're doing on campuses. I think, um. What I know that one of the things they picked up last year was to, uh, had a bill that was going to handle discipline and how we, you know, help. In the classroom and helping public schools. And that didn't quite make it to the finish line. You know, everything kind of got tied up in a knot and and according to public education last year, but. I think that's coming. And so there's some really good work going on that. Um, I, I think what you're going to see with our. You know, we had started a basis of how we're preparing, uh, elementaries and junior highs and, and making those safer facilities. What you would have seen is the high schools were really difficult. And just because they're so large, they're so old and there's so many doors. And how do you, you know, take care of all that? So the bond last year was a big issue for us because. Not only did it address two major high schools, two significant six A high schools, but it brings the ninth graders over to those campuses. So now we've got reconfiguration going on, but we've got nine through twelve. In a building that's modern. It's got all the bells and whistles of security that we need to make sure we're doing the very best for kids. And in the meantime, some of the other schools that we had, like Midland High freshman, Midland freshman, um, it's going to become a middle school. And so now we're, we, part of the bond money was. Money to readdress what were the weaknesses in Midland freshman? How do we make it better? How do we deal with the safety issues there? So. So that's the, that's the next step that's going on. And so we're kind of seeing that kind of lay itself out now, um, across the district. We'd already. Gone through all elementaries with the two thousand twelve bond and secured, uh, the vestibules for the offices.
Okay.
And so it was locked to get in. You had to, you had to either buzz in or or, or scan in if you were a teacher or had the code or had the key pass. But, uh, we've done that. All but two elementaries were set up in that faction. I think, I think there were two that still. Had the, the office kind of in the middle of the campus, which made it really difficult. So we're kind of addressing those needs. But, you know, in the meantime, last year, uh, again, we, we, we have a, a safety officer now. That goes through and monitors our buildings and, um, you know, they do surprise audits and and you don't hear about that in a board meeting. He'll, he may give an overall general report.
Okay.
But when he comes in executive session, talks to the board, he gives detailed, um, of observations about what he saw on campuses. This door was locked or this door was unlocked. This door had a broken lock, locking mechanism. So we weren't doing what we needed to do to provide safety. And so we get that on a regular basis and and those audits, there's just surprise. And so nobody knows when they're showing up or, or, you know, so a principal can't just be prepared. Hey. Make sure everything's locked today. It's, it's a standard we've set now. And so that was already ongoing, um, trying to make sure we're doing the best we can to provide safety.
All the things that you just talked about, safety and. Addressing those things like, and again, I'm not a, I'm not a parent with children in the, in the school district, but like. How is that being communicated to the public? Like, you know what I mean? Like what communication methods are you guys typically utilizing to address? The citizens here or the public?
Yeah.
On the changes that are being addressed, whether they be, you know, whether they have kids in the school district or not.
Right, sure. And so that was a big thing when I got first got elected was transparency with the school district. What are you doing? Why are you not telling us about it? And, um. And we've done a much better job, but I, I'll give you a few examples, but Dr. Howard has a, has, you know, a phrase that she told us and it's caught on with me because I believe it is. If you're not telling your story, you're not going to like how someone else tells your story. So we've got to be better at it. And so our current, uh, public information officer, uh, Lindsay White does a fabulous job of getting the message out there. But. Going to the bond, we've done some really fabulous things and we, and we learned a lot from two thousand nineteen when we failed the bond because. People didn't really understand what all was going on and in the bond. And so there was some, some transparency issues there and it wasn't intentional. It was just that. We didn't communicate well enough to show people what we were doing. So, uh, we learned a lot in two thousand nineteen. So from that, in, in this bond, we had a, a huge, uh, committee that was on the bond committee and it was. Really open to whoever wanted to come. I mean, you didn't have to be invited. Originally, we started off as an invitation and then, and then it kind of grew to. Making sure we had some community members in there and some other people, you know, come be a part of that committee. So what we have done since the bond has passed. Is now, um, and, and this is at the direction, I mean, the board's direction to Dr. Howard and her leadership is we've got a bond advisory committee that goes through and now. They get regular updates, monthly updates about, here's where we are, um, here's what we told you we were going to do. Here's how, how far we've gotten the process. And here's how we're staying on track if, you know, and they get to see that. And then obviously those people are community members, so they can go out and share that with others. But it's also, we, you know, it's dedicated on M I C's website that you can see all of that. And, and even now, we, um. If you go to M I C's website, there is actually a live cam shot of the new elementary that's being built.
Oh, cool.
And so I don't know if you've ever seen those when something was being built, you could kind of see the daylight darkness, daylight.
Time lapse?
Yeah. And so that's what they're doing. And so you, you can actually see that, that campus being built from the ground up. So you're actually seeing that. So we're reporting that, um, in the committee. So that's, uh, so we've got watchdogs, making sure we're staying on track. We're not doing anything we didn't say we were going to do. Everything is focused.
Cause I'm sure you recognize that like, social media.
Oh, yeah.
Has its pros and cons, obviously, right? And so the rumor mills can happen and, and people can not be fully informed, right? And start to make up their, their minds on certain things. But I mean, it only takes. You know, it only takes a handful of people for, for a rumor to, you know what I mean? Or for misinformation to run rampant.
Sure.
Right? So I'm always being, being in the communication world and being in the marketing world, I'm always sitting there going like, how do you? Man, how do you, how do you get a handle on that, right? For more than just like, well, you can come to this, you can come to this meeting, right? Or things like that. But I mean, addressing it. So it's like. Just in case, we don't know if this is direct to you, you know, affects you or not directly, but here's what's happening because everybody wants accountability, I guess, right? So.
And so, so we, we, and we've got that through the website. So you can do that anytime. And then in our, in our monthly board meetings too. We are getting a monthly report every month from our facilities, uh, uh, director and our CFO. Um, and they, they all have titles. I'm not giving you the right titles, but, um, and so they're, they're telling us every board meeting. And so you, if you wanted to go back in and watch a board meeting, you could go through the agenda and find where that topic came up. And then. You can see what, what we've talked about. They will, they will tell the community, all right, um, this is where we are at. And what the next step is, is we need you, the board to approve this for us to move forward. And so, and that's coming up and later in, in action item nine D or something. So they'll tell you. And so we'll vote on it that meeting. But so we're getting that monthly update too in a board meeting. So you've got that. And then, and then obviously Dr. Howard is meeting with principals. Weekly. And so, and then she does, she visits every campus kind of routinely, um, where she's going and and meeting with different, different, uh, uh, campuses, just so that she gets to give information to them. So she's keeping campuses up to date. Hey, this is where we are. This is what we're doing. This is the outlook that, you know, you could, you should expect. And so she, so, so we're communicating to internally, but we're also putting it out there so the public can all see it. And when we're way better, much better at, at putting information out through Lindsay's office now that, you know, what's going out to the public, you know, you know, pretty regular press releases.
Oh, that's great to hear. Okay. So the second part where you're, we're talking about the two new high schools, pass the bond, getting two new high schools. And again, this is from my perspective of like, I just see what people are talking about online. When we put out stuff about Midland as a whole. Why is, why, why is, um, Midland High so controversial with the, with the golf course community here? I don't understand. I don't get the whole gist of it.
And, and I can't really talk a whole lot about that because there's litigation right now.
Okay.
But just a little bit of background to it is that we, um, in, in two thousand nineteen, and I'm glad you asked this question because, you know, people. There's a lot of hate out there right now over Rancho Lynn.
Yeah.
But, um, in two thousand nineteen, when that came up, uh, before we actually did the two thousand nineteen bond, that was earlier in the year. Came up that we needed to find a location for Midland High School. So at the time, the, uh, facilities director, um, really directed us at two sites. And so one of them was the Rancho Lynn facility. And I, most people didn't know it was, uh, for sale, but we'd been approached and we knew it was for sale. And it wasn't the first time. There was the prior board before I actually got on the board in two thousand sixteen. Had had conversations with them about buying that, that area. So it wasn't the first time in two thousand.
This wasn't just brand, brand new news. Okay.
So, um, and then, and so that came up and, um, you know, the tax appraisal was really low. Um, and, and. I mean, I, I can't, I can't explain that. It was just a golf course. So they didn't have a high appraisal, but.
True.
We had a market appraisal and, um, and I, and I'm, I'm going to give you some rough estimates because this is what I think. I think at that time it was, it was appraised about four and a half million. And so that's what we had to look at as an, as a board. And, you know, we need to do all kinds of discussions like that in executive session because you don't. If you're buying a piece of property, you don't want to compete with someone and you don't want to do that in the open where you're telling them, hey, we're looking at this property and then the price goes up automatically. And so, uh, we knew that. And so, you know, when we're negotiating, I kind of got stuck on six million. I was like, this is, I think. You know, there's value there. This is the best site we've got. But I, you know, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm an, I'm a CPA. I'm an accountant. I'm conservative from Texas. I don't like to spend a lot of money. So I was like, I, I'm out right now. We can't keep going. And. But I, you know, I was outvoted by the rest of the board. There were, there were really five board members that were all in. And so they negotiated to the nine and a half million dollar mark. Um, there were two of us that weren't, uh, one of those, uh. Actually voted in favor of it because, uh, he was going to lose. I mean, he knew that where the money number was. I, I just. Held to my belief that that was too much money. So I voted no. And so, um, you know, so that's, we've had that property since two thousand nineteen and. And I don't know if the issue is people really thought. Even, either this is never going to happen. They're not going to build a school there or they're never going to pass a bond. I don't know because I mean, it's been five years.
We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, kind of thing. Okay.
And so we've had five years. And so immediately the bond failed in two thousand nineteen. And so, I mean, that was within one year's time. And so the bond failed. And so we had an original lease with the, the golf course because we knew even if the bond passed. In two thousand nineteen, it was going to take a year of design. So we had a lease for them for that first. You know, partial year and then the year for one dollar a year, just to keep them, you know, playing. And so people, you know, often forget that, that we. Didn't charge them a whole lot of money for doing what, you know, they were doing out there. But then after the bond failed, we, and the lease was up, we went. And because we did it for two years, knowing that, you know, it was going to be time for us to, to build at that point. And so we, uh, the bond failed. So we knew we weren't coming up. So we did a lease again. And this time we did a little bit different and it. It was a ten thousand dollar a month lease and then we shared in the net income after everything was done. So. Uh, it was more, it was better deal for the school district. And so I think that average, you know, range probably a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand that M I S D was bringing in for that lease. But, um.
I mean, what do you say to the people who are just like complaining about, now I'm going to, I'm going to go golf somewhere else or my tee times are going to be off. Like, I'm kind of looking at it like, this is for the future leaders of Midland.
It absolutely is for the future of Midland. And if there was any other place that we would have, you know, been able to come across, you know. We wouldn't be having this discussion now. I would have been, you know, moot, but, uh, we just never found that spot and it, it's going to be a great thing in the future. I mean. I don't know if you saw the renderings that came out of our two.
I did, yeah. They look awesome.
Yeah, they're amazing.
Futuristic.
Yeah. And they're going to be great. And so it, that is what I would say. But then, you know, I understand, I understand that, you know, um. For these, maybe I, I'm going to guess six hundred families that were out there. That was a way of life for them. And so I get it. I've got compassion for that. I understand it. And I tried. I mean, I was board president, I told you, uh, during part of this time. And, and so during, uh, May, May second, two thousand twenty-three, I actually, we actually held another meeting. To look at other sites and went, went through four more sites that we tried to determine if this was, uh, you know, possibility for us to move. And that was before we actually sold the bond. You know, went to the public with the actual bond work. And so, um, we're trying to get ahead of it and, um, just didn't work. And so. We, you know, the, the information goes to the bond committee. They approve it that they're all gung ho. The voters pass it, uh, last November. And so now we're off. And so, you know, we, we still had that year, just like I told you before, we had that year of planning. And so that year is now coming to a close. We just, September thirtieth was kind of it.
Okay.
And so we're moving to the next step. And so, you know, I, I have a lot of compassion for those people. I get it. Um, and I'm one that, um, I live in Midland. I know what, uh, what's here. And it is a great green space and it's, it was my favorite golf course. And I, I don't play golf often. I love to play golf, but. You know, with kids and grandkids and school district and all the other things I, you know, and then I don't get to play a whole lot. I mean, because usually on Saturdays, I'm like, I'm not, I'm resting. I'm not doing anything else.
There's going to be new golf courses.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? For the people out there like.
Yeah.
I, I, I just, I'm looking at it like, this is for, this is for the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We've got to, we've got to foster that.
And, and that's the thing is, is, you know, and, and we talked about it again last March, uh, this past March and April about, you know, what, uh, we were doing. And we. Had the discussion publicly so that people could understand where we were coming from. But, um, you know, a lot of people, I had probably had as more, well, I know I had more emails, probably. Three or four times more emails from the people that passed the bond and said, hey, we approved this to go forward. And so we don't want you to move back because it is important, education. And so we don't want you to move back because it is important. Education is important. And, and really if we're going to do justice by these kids, we've got to move forward and, and it's expensive to just delay a, a day.
Right.
And so we've got, you know, got to keep warm. So you're, you're absolutely right. But at the same time, I have compassion that it's, it's hard for them, but I, but, and I get it, but we've just got to move forward.
Brian, it has been a pleasure having you on today, man. I, I loved hearing your story. I, I could tell your passion for the city. I can tell you the passion for the education system here. You've got a family of educators. Why should Midland vote for Brian Murray?
I, I appreciate the honor that of being elected for the past eight years to do this work, but I am passionate about it. And I'll tell you, it's because I believe in our future and I believe in our kids. And I, there's no way we have a bright future unless we get these kids educated. And so that's where my heart is. Uh, I really, not one time have ever come on this board is had an, having an agenda, anything other. Cause a lot of people say, well, I'm going to do this and I'm going to get on the board to do this. Well, I didn't have that agenda. This is just pure passion and I want what's, what's best for kids. And, and I want to do, I, I, you know, I put in the time, um, I'm invested. I, you know, I, when we prepare for a board meeting, I read it once, just kind of summary to kind of get, probably come up with a few questions and then I read it again to be more thorough and kind of know what's there. And so I'm always well-prepared and knowing what's going on. And so I put in the time and I, and that's what I hope people see is that this is not something that I take lightly. And I take it personal when we don't show the results that we ought to show. It's personal to me. I mean, and, and I, you know, some of the things that come out, uh, you know, about the results we've had over the years, they're true. And I, I can't deny it and I'm not happy about it, but, uh, it's, it's not because we haven't tried. And, you know, you could, anybody could sit and give excuses all day, but that's not what we're about. We're about getting results, not excuses. And so I'm just passionate about doing this work and I want to be here. I, I, you know, I told you earlier, I've got three grandsons coming. And, um, I can't think of a better way to, you know, serve their needs than to be here and be invested in M I S D and how we can make it better. I've got a son that's, uh, going to be teaching in the profession a long time. And so how do we, you know, deal with what the teachers face and, and, and what, how do we make the classroom better? I mean, this thing gets important and, um, you know, I, I have a great boss that, uh, Ms. Wagner, that just totally believes in education and she's a big time supporter. And so, um, if anything I've learned from her is she's, you know, we've got to get back. We've got to push into education and we've got to make it better. And that's what I want to do. I want to make it better than it was for my kids. And I want to make it better than for my grandkids than it was for my kids. And so just keep pushing that envelope and how we do what we do and do it with, you know, great customer service, but also with great outcomes. And, and that's what I'm really looking for is we've really got to push the envelope with outcomes.
I know the election's right around the corner, but if anybody, um, you know, wants to get in touch with you or wants to get involved, like where should they, how do they contact you?
Sure. So I have a Facebook page, uh, uh, elect Brian Murray.
Okay.
Brian Murray for District Seven. Um, um, I've got an email address, brian underscore murray at yahoo dot com. And then, um, I've, I put my cell phone out there. So if someone really wanted to ask me a question, I would hope that nobody would call.
Well, we won't put your phone over.
Yeah. But, uh, but I, uh, I'm, I put that on my business cards that I pass out because I want people to know that they can come to me and ask questions. And I'm, I've been very responsive about, you know, going about answering questions. Uh, I think that's a, you know, responsibility of a board member is because when you're, when you're answering those questions, you're learning what's important to the community. And so, uh, feel free, we also have, you know, on the M I S D website, I have a, uh, M I S D email address.
Okay.
There's, you can, you can send that out to, it's brian dot murray at midlandisd.net.
Okay.
And so people can definitely reach out to that one too, because I'll answer both of those.
Well, I appreciate it, man. We'll put that, we'll link that in the description below. And, uh, hey, thanks again for stopping in.
Yeah.
And, uh, hey, better vote, vote for Brian.
Yeah.
On the election. And we'll see you on the next one. Bye.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, man.
Yeah.